Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Kreskowjak.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
All right, well, why don't we adopt this evening's agenda then?
Motion to adopt the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next is our approval of the minutes from our January 21st meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion by Carlson. Was that Kreskowjak?
Yep.
Second, is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are adopted. We have one item on our consent agenda this evening, and that's just to receive the schedule of electronic payments, and this will be from January 16th, 2025, to January 29th, 2025.
With approval of consent?
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there any discussion or questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? And the consent agenda item is adopted. All right, item three is to consider planning case 25-2 and 25-3, consider a PUD and preliminary plat, Coon Rapids Town Homes, 10701 Butternut Street Northwest, September Sun Architecture LLC. Mr. Pastor, why is the address Butternut Street? It doesn't seem like it... It seems like it should be in University Avenue. I don't know.
Mayor Cook, I don't control the addresses. I don't know the...
Just a question. Go ahead, Mr. Pastor.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have before you tonight a request for a PUD and preliminary plat for a 34-unit townhome development at 10701 Butternut Street at the intersection of Butternut and Coon Rapids, or sorry, and University Avenue. Most of the council members should recognize this one. Going over the property briefly, especially for the new council members, it's a 3.8-acre vacant property. It was formerly owned by the Peace Lutheran Church just to the north. They were formerly using it as a community garden space. It does have frontage on University Avenue and Butternut Street, and to the north it is very close to the University and Northdale Boulevard intersection. The two potential access points on the property would be on Butternut to the south of the property or on University to the east of the property. The applicant is proposing to only access the property via University Avenue to the east. The property is within the office zoning district, and the applicant is requesting a PUD overlay be approved over the office zoning district to allow a residential use. A residential use would not generally be allowed in the office zoning district, but with a PUD overlay, the council does have the discretion to approve a use that is not usually allowed in the office district, and the applicant is proposing this or requesting this overlay in lieu of requesting a rezoning to the MDR, or Moderate Density Residential, zoning district. So I'll be going over it in just a little bit more detail further along in the presentation, but the applicant is essentially proposing a development that would fit in generally with the MDR zoning district standards. However, they're proposing to use the PUD tool to achieve this. The future land use for the property is commercial mixed use, which does allow for either residential or commercial uses, or a mix of both. So what's being proposed does fit within the future land use designation in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And what is being proposed by the applicant is for the development to meet all but one of the standards of the MDR zoning district, and I'll go into that one exception standard further in the presentation. So here's the future land use designation of the property in context. It's the Commercial Mixed Use District, which it shares with the property to the south across Butternut. So as most of the council members recognize, this was brought forward, or similar proposal was brought forward in the spring of 2024. Some of the differences between what was brought forward in 2024 and what is being brought forward now are that the townhomes were previously aligned to the east up against University Avenue with the driveline and parking on the west side of the site. That's been flipped, so the townhomes are now aligned west. The previous access was on Butternut Street to the south. Now the applicant is only proposing access on University Avenue as a right-in, right-out to the east, and instead of requesting a rezoning from office to MDR, the applicant is now requesting a PUD overlay. So the rezoning to MDR was denied in the summer of 2024 by the city council with the primary concern being that the access off Butternut Street would put too much traffic on the smaller residential streets. And one of the reasons why the applicant is requesting a PUD overlay rather than a rezoning now is because it does give the city more ability to essentially control what is allowed on the site. Rezoning to MDR would allow, so in the future, if the application is approved but does not actually go forward with construction, rezoning to MDR would allow a future developer to, by right, be able to build a residential use on that site. By using a PUD, the PUD is tied directly to this application, so if anyone in the future were to bring forward another application for this site, would it not go through? They would need to request an update to the PUD or for the PUD to be removed. So the council would still need to make an approval for anything to go forward in the future. At the January 16th meeting, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the item. They received comments from residents in the area, mostly related to traffic and safety concerns. The Planning Commission did vote six to one to recommend approval of the PUD and preliminary plat with Commissioner Schmalki being the one no vote. So what the applicant is proposing and what staff are proposing for the PUD standards are for the development to be required to meet the moderate density residential standards with one exception, and that is an exception for a setback of the parking and drive area from the street right-of-way. On the east side of the development, where the parking and drive area abuts the property line and the right-of-way for University Avenue, the setback for parking is required to be 20 feet in the MDR district. The applicant is requesting this be modified to 15 feet to allow room for the guest parking spaces that are proposed on the west edge of the site. Staff do support this proposed modification, noting that the parking will still be about 30 feet from the University Avenue curb and that there will be landscaping as well as a sidewalk buffering this parking area from the curb. All of the other moderate density residential standards are proposed to be met by the application. I'm not going to go over all the individual moderate density residential standards, other than noting that the very last one on this table here, I have parking and driveway from street right-of-way, 15 feet. Normally in moderate density residential, that would be 20 feet, so that's the one exception from the MDR standards that we normally have. And then I just added on here a screenshot of the site plan showing the townhomes aligned to the west, the landscaping plan, which does show trees and shrubs and other landscaping generally all around the edges of the development as well as between the individual townhome buildings, and the stormwater plan, which shows a stormwater retention pond on the southeastern corner of the site as well as stormwater draining to the middle of the western side of the site, and then off-site to a city-owned property that's used for stormwater infiltration. So stormwater would drain to both of those two different areas. Here are the elevations for the townhomes, showing the backs of the townhomes with the garages, two-car garages on the lower level, and then the front of the townhomes with the front doors on the lower level, and then also showing that the east and west sides of the townhome buildings will have windows into those units, so they are not just blank walls. And then the applicant did provide updated, slightly higher-quality renderings for the townhomes that I provided here. So this is a view of the front side of the townhomes from the driveline to the east, a view of the backside of the townhomes from the driveline to the east, and then a view from the walking path between two of the townhome buildings of the front side of one of the townhome buildings, and I can spend a little bit more time on any of those slides upon request. And then finally, for access, the applicant is proposing right-in, right-out in the middle of the site onto University Avenue, and the Inoka County Highway Department staff did work with the Inoka County Highway Department to determine a way forward to allow a right-in, right-out onto University Avenue, and this would require the applicant constructing a turn lane to county standards on the west side of University Avenue just south of the Northdale Boulevard intersection, which cars turning into the site would need to use. I did mention the public comments received at the January Planning Commission meeting. I'd be happy to go into more detail on that on request. With that, I do have a motion recommended by staff to adopt the Resolution 25-28 with the stated conditions, and then beyond that, I also have a motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat. I don't have any conditions to the preliminary plat. The conditions are all tied to the PUD, and I do just want to point out condition number seven, which is the condition that ties the PUD to the MDR development standards, requiring the development to meet all of those standards with the one setback exception that I called out. That's all I have for our presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Pastor, could you go back to that, the last image you showed? There you go. Down on the bottom, on the very south end of that, right near Butternut Street, is there, is there any kind of fencing proposed there?
Mr. Mayor, there is not.
Okay. Because with the, with the front doors there, and we know how this works with rental units around town, Butternut's going to fill with cars. I mean, they're going to, they're going to park there. It's going to be the easiest path in and out, if not for them, for their guests. And my other concern is when you look at how the drives, when you're driving in straight west, at least a couple of those line right up with the back of homes or the side of homes, and I guess I'm always more of a fan of a privacy fence for keeping the headlights out of the yards, out of the backyards. What, what would that look like? Would that be, would that be reasonable? Didn't we do that? Didn't, didn't the townhome further south on University, didn't, didn't they put a privacy fence around that? That Cedarwood or whatever it was?
Mr. Mayor, yes. I believe, I believe they did. Thank you, yeah. So that would, that is a... Because this is a PUD proposal, requesting that a condition be added to require a fence on either the western or southern side of the site, that would be on the table because city council does have a lot of discretion in terms of what they would approve as part of a planned unit development. Generally, fencing surrounding this site, in my opinion, would be similar to what you see at other multifamily developments in the city. I don't think it would be out of character with anything in the area or the rest of the city, especially on the south side or the west side of the development.
Okay. All right. I'll let council ask questions. That was, those were my, my two big jumpouts.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Pastor, I'd just like a little clarification on that. So, so we approved this tonight. Is the, I mean, is the fence off the table, or do we approve it with a condition tonight that a fence will be added along the western edge? I, I wouldn't support this unless I would know that there's some privacy fence on the west side of the property.
Councilmember Carlson, the council can add a condition to the approval to require a fence, and I would recommend doing so if you'd like to see a fence on the property, because now would be the time to add a condition to the planned unit development.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Pastor, would you, would staff prefer adequate screening versus a fence? The one reason why I ask the question is specifically with that outlaw for drainage that's city-owned. A fence in a drainage space kind of is asking for trouble in a way, when really, we're looking at screening kind of the three drive aisles, right? Cars pointed straight out at that. You know, I know we've had this discussion at planning multiple times, but to me, whether it's a fence, whether it's a berm, whether it's shrubs, whether it's something, I, I'm, to me, I'd be a little, I'd prefer a little more flexibility to accommodate the request of screen headlights to the west. I agree fully with the south, on the south side there. I think you're going to need some sort of fencing there, otherwise that will be additional parking. So I'm on board with that one, but just general commentary about screening versus requiring a fence, knowing that we're trying to drain water to the west there, to that little triangle lot.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Mr. Patzner, I think that everyone understands that Coon Rapids is desperate for places to put residential housing, and no matter what happens, this plot of land will be developed. And so personally, I'd like to thank staff and the developers for coming back to us and giving us something that will solve the issues that we came up with before, and it looks like, for the most part, you guys have done that. I do agree that there is that fence needed on the south side, because, quite frankly, pedestrian traffic is going to come from everywhere, if it can, and so we just need to make a simple solution to head that off. But again, I want to thank staff and the developers for working so hard to come up with something that will work, and this definitely has my support.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
My, my biggest concern with this whole thing, and I don't know who all has done it, but the U-turns on, on University and Egrit and the U-turn on University and Northdale. I'll be, I'll admit, I drive a full-size F-150, and I've gone down there and done the U-turns, and when you've got traffic going through there, I mean, again, I've got the green arrows, so I've got the clearance, that is not an easy U-turn, and you've got people, when you're doing a U-turn off of, off of University to come back down southbound, you have people trying to jump that right turn more times than you think. I am, I am not a big fan of these, these U-turns at all. I know, again, compliments to, to the developer, they've, they've, they've come back over and over and over again with changes and whatever else, but I'm not a, I'm not a fan of this right-in and right-out there. I know there's not another option that I'm aware of for that, but between that and, again, if we're honest with ourselves, people are going to figure out in a matter of days that cut through on Butternut to, to get over to Northdale to go whichever direction they want, and that's coming right out in front of the school again, as far as, as far as the, the buses go, as far as the, as far as any delivery trucks, et cetera, et cetera, that are going to be coming in and out of there. I don't, I have no idea what the numbers are on that, but I do know there, with the delivery people, they're going to find their shortest route in and out, and I don't think they're going to be whipping a UE on, on, on University one end or the other. So honestly, I appreciate everything that the, the developer's done, but I'm not a fan of this, the right-in, right-out.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Novak?
Just to rebut that just a little bit, the, the U-turn, while it might not be optimal, is quite common in the city. When we put the bridge over the railroad tracks on Hanson Boulevard, three neighborhoods were diverted so that there was only one exit and entrance going into those. And one of those was actually on the other side of Hanson. It had to go through a tunnel under the bridge and then come out and around onto Hanson Boulevard going north, and if anybody wanted to go south to Coon Rapids, they had to do a U-turn on Hanson Boulevard at the next intersection by Epiphany Church. So there's a lot of precedent for this, and it does work. It's slightly inconvenient, but people get used to it, and for the majority, they do follow the law.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Armstrong?
Yeah. As far as that goes, I live on, I live right off of Foley Boulevard, where the county came in and put in all those medians, and you talk to the neighbors up and down Foley Boulevard. They hate having to do those U-turns. They got it on 113th, you got it on 109th, et cetera, et cetera. It is a pain in the butt. They, I, I drive that road daily, and especially during rush hour traffic, you watch those U-turns being made, and again, just kind of putting it all into perspective, with Foley Boulevard, you're coming up the hill, that slight incline from McDonald's, so it is very difficult to see cars come in that direction when you're whipping the U-turn. Over on University, the problem you have is you have, and again, this is just my opinion, but you have more traffic there than you have on, coming off of Northdale back and forth, and that, that U-turn, especially, well, on University and Northdale, you have a little bit of forgiveness there because the, the way, the, the way the road turns, but on University and Egrit, trying to take and make a U-turn there right at the intersection coming into Oak Park Plaza, number, number one, it's not an easy U-turn, and number two, you've got a lot of traffic going in and out there. Blainside, if you look at the way they've got the, the, the exit marked, and then Coon Rapids, you look at the way the exits are marked, the entrance onto University is marked, they're completely different. One goes, one goes left and straight. On the other side, it goes right and straight, and you've got people going in and out of that, trying to figure out where those lanes are when you've got U-turns being made as well. It is, it is not as easy as people think.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Novak?
Sorry, question. The only people who would be affected by that U-turn in this case would be the people living in that development, correct?
And any traffic that's flowing at the time.
But if that is controlled by a controller, if there's a, a lane coming out, I mean, I guess I'm just a little curious about that concern, just because, like I say, we've already done it for neighborhoods that are in excess of 100 residences. This just doesn't seem like that big a deal.
Well, it's a big deal to me, honestly, and it's a big deal to the neighborhood there, and I know it's a big deal as far as when you're talking about kids walking to school, buses being, buses picking kids up. I guess, I don't want to look at too far into the future, but if you put a fence on the south side of that to, to keep the headlights out and et cetera, et cetera, where are you going to have the kids picking the bus up at? You've got either having them walk down to the neighborhood, if it's for the high school or whatever, or the, where, University Avenue? Because you can't have them picking up on, on Butternut unless it's, it's further down the street, and then you've got, you've got buses going through there along with everything else.
If I may, Mr. Patzner, what is this currently zoned as, again?
The current zoning is office.
Okay, so if we were to put an office space in there, then conceivably, there could even be more traffic than if it were residential?
Councilmember, Councilmember Novak, that is a possibility.
Okay. So again, this area will be developed eventually, and so we have to figure out how to make it work the best way we can.
I agree. I agree, but this, this is not, this is not, I don't believe this is in the best interest of the, of the neighborhood, and again, I'll be, I'll admit, I don't have a, I don't have a good solution for how you would do this, but I'm not a fan of it.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Kreskowjak?
I have a question kind of related to the safety of the kids and the stuff and walking on here. We're proposing, or the county is proposing, 135-foot turn lane southbound into there, so it's going to probably be 135-foot turn lane from Northdale all the way into the entrance of this. My question is, are you going to eat up all that buffer that's currently between University Avenue and the sidewalk? We had meetings in January talking about our active transportation plan, and one of the things we talked about is one of the safest things we can have in town is have that buffer between the roadway and the sidewalk. So my question is, is that going to be eaten up with that turn lane?
Thank you, Councilmember Kreskowjak. The turn lane will eat up some of that buffer. I don't believe it will eat up the entirety of the buffer between the road and the sidewalk there, but I don't know what the exact number is in terms, in terms of how much of that buffer will be left.
And related to the safety issue, I think that there is a safety issue with a high amount of U-turns, even at a controlled intersection. Some of the concerns I had.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Pastor, I'd like to go back to that fence again. So we've got that drainage area back there, and that's city property, right? So we'll have access to that, right? It's our property. We'll have access to that down there. So would a, would a fence prevent water from draining down there? I mean, if we had a berm there, that probably wouldn't be so good for draining either, would it?
Councilmember Carlson, I believe the plan is for the water to drain underground from the site, storm drains on the site to that infiltration pond, and city staff do have, I believe, access to that infiltration pond off of Butternut, two parcels to the west of this parcel. There's like a small strip.
I see a little strip. So we would be able to get down there if there's some common issue?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
I just wanted to thank staff and the developer too for coming back and trying to address some of the concerns from earlier. You know, I know that a big issue last year was concern about having that turn into Butternut, and so switching to a turn off of University might help alleviate some of the concerns. I'm totally open to some sort of barrier on the western side, whether it's a fence or, as Councilmember Geisler was suggesting, maybe some sort of, you know, trees or something else just for a privacy perspective. I think that makes sense with it, and I'm just really enthusiastic for projects like this. I agree with Councilmember Novak. The city has a housing crisis. This is an opportunity to get more housing for individuals who maybe are trying to get their first step in the city and, you know, folks returning, whether from school or maybe folks who are veterans, and I'm excited for a project like this.
I guess, Councilmember Armstrong, I love your passion on this. I really do. I think that all these U-turns, this is the kind of the hand we've been dealt by the county. You know, every time they redo a street, that's how it, that's how they, they move around now. It's U-turns. The neighborhood that Councilmember Novak is talking about, obviously, he's very familiar with it, but that was the one I looked at today because there's about 30 rental units on the west side of Hanson, and then there's about nine, no, 80 other additional residents on the other side. So it's a total of 110 residents that all go in and out of a right turn in, right turn out from Hanson at the bottom of the bridge. You know, they go up and make a U-turn at an uncontrolled intersection if you want to go south. So it's not without precedent, and, and I think it's, it's the challenge we've got to work around as we develop these properties. It's, it's all we're going to have is those U-turns, and I don't know that this adds that many vehicles to it. I think that the Butternut Street is a problem in and of itself. The few additional cars that this adds is going to exacerbate a problem that's already there, but I don't think, I think that still requires a different solution of some sort. If, as long as, as long as we can get a fence around this, I'm, I'm okay with this project. I just don't want, I don't want this to have, I don't want people to be wandering across that, that land Butternut. I don't, I would just assume, I'm concerned about keeping the parking within the complex.
Mr. Mayor?
That fence would, should help that. Councilmember Butler?
I just had a clarifying question for you. When you're talking about the fence, do you mean both on the western and southern side of it?
I, I kind of am. Yeah, I like, I like the idea. Shrubs are nice, a berm is nice, but all of that could be traversed if that becomes a shortcut for the kids to get somewhere, or for people to get somewhere, whereas the fence is a little difficult to navigate.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
Mr. Patzner, if we were to go that route where there would be a fence both on the western and southern side, would we need to amend the recommendations at all? Because I kind of wonder if recommendation nine about the, you know, referencing that we wouldn't have any sort of direct driving, right? I think it's, oh, no, excuse me, it's not nine. That's my mistake. Number 11, excuse me. Number 11, where it's referencing that there would be no direct sort of driveway on Butternut, would we need to revise that at all if we had instituted a fence, or could we keep that and just make the addition?
I mean, they're already saying that there wouldn't be.
Okay.
And so a fence would just sort of memorialize that.
Thank you for indulging my question.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So as, as someone who sat on planning for the first time this came around in this, you know, the alignment with the right, with U-turns came at our request as a body. That's, that's what we asked for. That's what we got, because we didn't want it on Butternut. In the places where you're going to have a U-turn, in this case, we have a left-hand turn lane, and we don't have a dedicated right-hand from Northdale. That is about as controlled of a spot to make a U-turn as possible, because you don't have a little right-turn chute coming south out of Northdale, which a lot of people will just crazy go through and won't see the U-turns. So as far as where the U-turns are going to happen, they're not ideal, but this is about as good of a spot as we can do it. I'm fine with the fence. I just wanted to clarify what we're at. Fence on the west and south. I'm good with that. I agree. Additionally, we need this middle housing. This is really good. This helps people move into homeownership in the long term for the city. I think that is a positive thing that we should continue to develop and look at in the city here. So I'm for this. I do, I do believe there's some concerns with the traffic along Butternut in general. I think there should be some review... I think there should be some review in consideration. I did ask staff to consider, like, what would it take for a sidewalk along there, since we're talking a lot, a lot about children walking to the school. Um, that, that's an expensive prospect, uh, it's something to consider. It would drastically improve safety along Butternut for children walking along that street, but it is not cheap. Um, I won't save any numbers, because we don't actually know what those would be, but it would be a way to improve the safety, and we already have a sidewalk along University, we already have a sidewalk along Northdale. So we'd be just basically memorializing kind of that little curve through and giving not only children potentially in these townhomes, but in the community as a whole, a way up to that school. Um, so there are solutions available to at least improve pedestrian safety along Butternut. Uh, cars is a whole different conversation. Uh, whether or not this goes in or not, it sounds like this pedestrian safety issue existed normally, so probably something worth looking at or deciding if we want to pursue, especially if the residents feel strongly about pedestrian safety in the area. Um, but again, it's not cheap, so we got to pay for it. Uh, but in general, um, I'd be fine with adding a fourteenth, uh, uh, condition on this, requesting a fence on the west and southern side, and otherwise, uh, before this.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Carlson?
I appreciate the addition, uh, number fourteen to the PUD. Um, yeah, I, I'm in support of the moderate density housing that we have going on. It's kind of an unfortunate location, but I'm, I, I am in support, and I do appreciate all the work that the applicant has done to change, you know, from where we started. Um, and I certainly, uh, I watched that, uh, planning meeting, and I certainly hear the residents loud and clear on, uh, on Butternut Street. And even though this certainly doesn't mitigate that concern, it, at least it reduces it. And I think it's a very small concession to add that fence on the west side. And then, yeah, maybe, uh, to Councilmember Geisler's excellent point, we could, uh, you know, look at, look ahead and see what we can do to, uh, try to, um, do something, just make it a little safer for the kids walking over to Eisenhower down Butternut Street. So I'm in support of it with that addition.
Any other questions of Mr. Patzner or thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowjak?
Final thought on this is, yeah, we did ask them, you know, to make some changes. We appreciate the changes that were made. It kind of came, like you said, at our request. Our concerns with the traffic and things are about as addressed as we can get. I would like to see if the county can minimize the, the impact on that buffer on that sidewalk. I think, I think that'd be great. I'm in favor of having the, uh, the fence on the west and south side as a requirement. And, you know, to the mayor's point, it is what it is, what, right? It's infill, and we've got a lot of this going on in Coon Rapids, and we're addressing, what are we going to do with these small infill lots? So I think this is a good, uh, usage of the space. Housing, obviously, is a plus for the community, so I think if we can manage the, uh, the safety aspects of the U-turns and things like that, be good.
My, my only other thought is, we'd probably still, because these are all going to be rental units, we would probably still need some help from the property manager to include in the lease that their parking has to be within the development. Um, we, we just can't let it get away from us, because unless you're just, unless you're going to fence the whole perimeter, it's, we're still going to have people on Butternut, parking on Butternut, and that's, that's not ideal there, especially with the businesses on the other side. What do you think? Is that, is that a way to do that?
Mayor Cook, I think that there's a way to add a condition that, um, parking, I mean, essentially, we, we would require them to have, um, somewhere in an agreement with the city or in their lease that parking be only on site, so not on any public right-of-way for residents of, visitors of the site. Um, it can be a little bit difficult, you know, I think city enforcement is difficult. I think that comes down to property owner enforcement a lot of the time. Um, but I do think it's a reasonable condition to add that all parking be limited to only the, the site itself.
Yeah, I, I realize, as you were answering it, I thought, oh, but we really can't write tickets for something like that if it's, if it's...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Carlson?
Could we possibly add maybe some no parking signs there?
Councilmember Carlson, um, I don't know.
Is that for Mr. Hanson, I suppose?
That would be a question for, for city engineer Hanson.
Do, do either of, I guess I would want to know if either businesses to the south use that for parking at all. They both have parking lots, but... Okay, well, I guess we'll just address that problem when it comes up, like we do all of our other apartments. Mr. Stemwell?
Mr. Barney, we're just conferring a little bit. I mean, if it's a public street that allows parking, you know, it would be difficult. We, we would have no armory to enforce that. It would sort of be on the honor system, I think, the property owner communicating to the renters of it. Um, if there is an issue with parking on that part of Butternut that we review as, and there's some reason to make it no parking, we'd have to do that through our typical ordinance process, or through sort of the emergency fire process, more likely the ordinance process. So, that would be our, our route that we would recommend.
So, and I do know, unlike some of our other situations, these guys do have adequate parking under our code, or they meet our code standards. I think the apartment complex we're thinking about did not, and we gave them kind of an exception, and they weren't able to kind of fulfill that obligation.
As long as they don't drive those F-150s, they'll fit in those sixteen-foot driveways, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
So I would like to make a motion that in Plan A Case 25-2, the City Council adopt Resolution Number 25-28 approving the proposed planned unit development with the twelve, with the thirteen listed conditions, plus a fourteenth condition that requires a fence along the western and southern property boundaries.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Carlson. Um, Mr. Pastner, does that give you enough, to work out the, the right kind of fence, something attractive, privacy?
Mayor Cook, I think so. I do want to defer, make sure that, uh, City Manager Stemwell agrees.
I would suggest a privacy fence, obviously it'd have to meet our code.
Mr. Mayor, amend, amend item fourteen to be a privacy fence in more specific language?
I second that amendment if I'm supposed to.
We're not going deep into the Roberts here, so. For the fourteenth, uh, with the fourteenth for a privacy fence on the west and south. Further discussion?
I was just asking if that would specify six feet. Something that can't easily be hopped over.
Right, I mean, mayor council, our, our ordinance actually allows for seven-foot uh, privacy fence, but, yeah, I mean, I think, we, we're sort of understanding, uh, council's direction that we're going to work with the applicant to make sure that it's adequate.
Excellent.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. One nay. Councilmember Armstrong?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
And then in Plan A Case 25-3, I move that we approve the proposed preliminary plat.
Second.
That was a motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there any further, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries. One nay. Councilmember Armstrong. All right. Thank you. Um, but you're staying there, I see, so. Four, Plan A Case 25-4, consider a final plat Coon Creek Commons, 1210 117th Lane Northwest, SPL Holdings LLC. Mr. Pastner, I'm sorry, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're going to be really disappointed when I stay after this one, too.
There's no disappointment.
Uh, I have before the council tonight a final plat request for Coon Creek Commons, which was formerly known as Hidden Creek Woods Second Edition by SPL Holdings at 1210 117th Lane Northwest. This is the parcel on Zeon Street, uh, adjacent to Sand Creek, where a preliminary plat and site plan were approved for twenty-unit townhome development. They're now coming forward with a request for a final plat. Um, there have not, preliminary plat here and then here have the final plat. There have not been any, um, substantial changes to the, um, plat in any way. Um, and the, the final plat does just show, uh, twenty lots, one for each residential unit, and then a twenty-first lot for the remainder of the site, including all of the common area, surrounding area, and then, um, the Sand Creek itself. Um, really nothing new to discuss here, so with that, I do have a motion, uh, to adopt a resolution approving this final plat with conditions as stated.
Any questions of Mr. Patzner on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Patzner, I'm going to put on my old hat and ask you a question. Do they square away, um, as far as, uh, routing around the sites here? I know that we don't have a site plan in front of us, but as far as trash pickup and, and mail and all those other things, those were some of the previous concerns?
Councilmember Geisler, the trash pickup, uh, is proposed to use the fire lane along the back of the units, um, for the, for the truck to make circulation, um, and pick up the individual trash cans, if, if that's speaking to your question.
Yes, that is my question. Thank you.
Are you taking that hat off now?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Pastner. I, I know I asked you this question earlier, but I just wanted to ask for viewers at home. Could you explain just where the turn would be on Zeon? I, I was having trouble reading that on the plat map, and thought it would just be helpful to clarify.
Thank you, Councilmember Butler. Um, yes, the turn into the site, and I don't have a site plan here that shows that turn. Um, the best I can do is the preliminary plat here, but on Zeon Street, basically at the easternmost corner of the site, so kind of the northeast corner, um, is where traffic would turn into the site. And it is actually the same access that the site to the north uses, so it would split off. The site to the north's access is on the property that would be used for this site, so, um, essentially, the owner of this property does have a right to that access as well, and so it would just be split off, um, to the west instead of to the north, um, when it turned in there. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Patzner on this? Anybody feeling it?
Mr. Mayor?
Who is that? Councilmember Carlson?
Yeah, right here, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-29 approving the final plat for Coon Creek Commons with the conditions as listed, uh, one through eight. Is that okay, Mr. Brown?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
That's a beautiful location. That's going to be really nice.
Yep, it's really nice open, too.
It's just beautiful. It's a beautiful place down there.
But what do you do? All right, any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item five is the, uh, consider design flexibility to the Club Car Wash 2550 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Mr. Pastner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So this is a request for design flexibility, essentially to paint the existing brick at the Club Car Wash, which is formerly Coon Rapids Express Car Wash at 2550 Coon Rapids Boulevard. So that's Coon Rapids Boulevard at the intersection, um, with Direct River Drive, um, just to the east of that. Uh, formerly Coon Rapids Express Car Wash, it was bought by Club Car Wash. Um, they made some changes to the building to accommodate their brand of car wash. They would like to make aesthetic changes to the exterior of the building. One of the changes they're proposing is to paint, um, the brick along the building, um, black and white, so black with white accents on the Coon Rapids Boulevard side, and kind of white with black accents on all of the other sides. Um, and in the River Rapids Overlay District, um, brick is one of the aesthetic requirements for at least thirty percent of a facade that faces the street. Thus, in painting the brick, it was staff's opinion that the building is no longer meeting that aesthetic requirement, requiring design flexibility. Um, and the Planning Commission did vote to recommend approval of this design flexibility, um, based on the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting on January sixteenth. Um, so I do have an image of what Coon Rapids Express Car Wash looked like before the rebranding, the blue roof, um, the windows and the, uh, red brick around the windows. The windows are being kept, um, and the applicant is proposing, and this is a rendering, even though, um, I was convinced that it was a photograph at first. They are proposing to paint most of the Coon Rapids Boulevard side black, uh, and with white accents along the windows, and then on all of the other sides, white throughout the most of the building, and then black accents on the bottom and, and top near the roof. And the roof will also be kind of a lighter shade of black, but black as well. Um, so staff do have recommended findings for approval, and staff are recommending approval of this design flexibility request. Thank you.
I would have sworn that's already done.
No.
No, it's still not.
Your honor?
Councilmember Novak first.
Move to approve the design flexibility for a painted facade for Club Car Wash. I think that looks amazing.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Carlson. All right, discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
We're going to go with, Councilmember Carlson, since he made the motion.
By knows. Yeah, I just, I just, I just stared at it today, and man, it just doesn't look right. Doesn't look right with that red brick. It just does not look right. I think it's going to look a, a whole lot nicer if it's all black. Or with some white.
Councilmember Geisler?
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm going to heartily disagree with that. Um, so my main concern here is, the point of the River Rapids Overlay District with this design is to have natural brick up and down the Boulevard. And if you go up and down the Boulevard, everything has natural brick to it. Um, they've already washed the, the stains off of, off of the existing one, because the previous owner wasn't keeping it up as well. Um, but they've, you know, the roof has been blacked out, there's already some black logoing, there are other parts of it. But everywhere else, if you go up and down, with the exception of one auto repair stop, is natural brick. And having that uniformed design aesthetic up and down the Boulevard is, in my opinion, the intent of this. There's a reason why they're coming to ask for the flexibility, because the building was already meeting what we wanted, and now they want to move it into something different. Um, I, I'm glad they're here, I'm glad, I'm, I appreciate the updates of the aesthetic parts. I'm not a fan of a black brick with a couple of white blobs on it. It removes it, they've already blacked out the windows as well, if you've been by there, so it will be black on a white square with black squares. It's very monochromatic. It actually loses, it, it, it creates massing problems, and it loses some of the kind of aesthetics that are there. That mid-tier of that kind of gray line cuts through there does add a little bit of depth to the site. Um, in general, I actually think they've already gotten it there, in, in a way that I believe meets the design aesthetic of the rest of the River Rapids Overlay District. Um, I also personally, and, and if I want to, just to put on the really technical part of this, um, and buying an existing building is not a unique condition. Um, that is why they bought it. It was already a car wash, they had much less to do to make it another car wash. Um, I, I think there's a certain level of having this car wash match the rest of the Boulevard versus, say, maybe making it look like, we don't, certainly don't want it to look like, uh, the shine, multi-lego brick look that's off on Hanson there. But I, I really strongly feel that the intent of the Overlay District is to keep a natural brick facade there. I am fine with the roof adjustments, I'm fine if they want to add a little bit of accent to it, but just the solid black and white rendering, to me, makes this building stand out like nothing else on the Boulevard, which defeats the purpose of the Overlay District.
Mr. Mayor?
And to be clear, all the blacked-out windows are because it's solid block walls behind the windows.
I know.
Yeah. Councilmember Guskowjak?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm agreeing with Councilmember Geisler on this. They've already had one design flexibility, and I think it was to make those windows opaque. Um, like I said, that, like he mentioned, you know, the rest of the area has natural brick, and we're doing a lot to try to spruce up Coon Rapids Boulevard. I don't think that we should, I won't say lower our standards, but change the standard for one case like this. I mean, to your point, if another car wash came and wanted to build on Coon Rapids Boulevard, these would be the design standards that we would go with, right? I mean, the ones that are already in place. So, um, yeah, I, I, I would prefer it to stay with brick. I think it's branded to their club standards already. You know, I, I thought about this a little bit last night. I mean, at, at one point I drove through a really upscale, uh, city in, in Colorado, and I drove by a Walmart. And that Walmart was beautiful, it just wasn't the gray brick and everything like that. Communities have standards for a reason, and I think we should stick to, to what we have in this corridor.
Okay, further discussion?
Your honor? Councilmember Novak?
I certainly understand those concerns. Um, I'm on the record previously for being willing to grant this type of, uh, design flexibility. Obviously, we did that on the corner of Crooked Lake and, uh, Coon Rapids Boulevard with that design there where they're going to be removing that gas station. Um, again, I do understand the concern. If the design held, underneath the windows, you can see black brick. If that were to be solid, uh, natural brick going all the way across at that level of that building, would that satisfy the thirty percent recommendation we have, or would it come close? Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Pastner?
Councilmember Novak, um, by intuition, I haven't done the calculation, my intuition is no. My intuition is that the, um, accents between the windows would also probably need... My intuition is that the accents between the windows would also probably need to be maintained as natural brick in order to meet that 30% requirement, but I'm not sure without actually measuring.
And those accents right now would be painted white, correct?
Correct.
So really, what we are talking about here is the area behind the club sign. Is that brick right there?
Correct, that is brick.
And possibly something on the other side, I believe, correct?
Correct.
So if those two were allowed to be painted, and we kept everything else the way it is, would that satisfy the 30%, or would it even come close?
Councilmember Novak, I think it would come close, but I'm not able to say whether it would cross the 30% threshold or not.
Because I'd be willing to compromise on this. I think that the fact that they have painted behind the club sign is what makes that look for them. That's the branding that they're looking for, is their logo on top of black. I own my own business, I know what my logo looks like, I don't want it to look different from that, because that's not what people are looking for when they come to me. So I'd like to come up with a bit of a compromise here and not just say, okay, well, we're going to approve this and change the entire look of the Boulevard, or we're not going to approve it, and these people are not going to be able to do what they need to do for their business. So I'd like to amend my motion to send this back to the developer. Or actually, was this coming from planning? The motion?
The motion is coming from planning. The proposal for the design on the brick is coming from the developer.
Okay. What I'd like to do is have this go back and, or if we could just do it here at the council meeting, okay, the brick along the bottom and the brick accents between the windows, and then have everything else painted as proposed.
Councilmember Novak, I think that's an option. I don't, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is appropriate for a council meeting, but the applicant is here at the meeting tonight, so if there are any questions that would best be answered by the applicant, they are available.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you've got some math to do, too, though. Would, are we gonna be painting it when it's five below anyway? I mean, or do we have another little time on this? Could we kick it out for a meeting and? Because I, right now, don't have, I don't have any idea which way the vote's gonna go. And, but it seems like if there's a compromise, maybe it would.
Mayor Cook, we could extend the review period to 120 days and bring it to another meeting if that's the desire of the council.
Okay. Council, what are your desires?
I'd like to see that pushed out.
Okay. So remind me, Mr. Brody, we've got a motion and a second on the table here.
Yeah, I think one option would be, is we didn't want to delve too far into Roberts today, but apparently we were gonna, is if the motioner, who's the one who's requested this, wants to withdraw his motion, and then you would move to table this to the next available meeting, which I presume would be in two weeks or in a month, depending on what you think is an appropriate time amount.
Your honor.
Okay, just hang on just before you.
Hit that.
Just a second here. Mr. Patzner, what do you think is reasonable? Would you like, would, a month?
Also keeping the 120 days in mind as well.
Yeah, Mayor Cook, I think the first March meeting would be a reasonable time to bring it back, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that was what I was asking, just in case Councilmember Novak was going to retract his motion and make a motion to table, I just wanted to.
Mayor and council, I might suggest so you not stipulate a specific date. If we're gonna extend the timeline, we could work with the developer and just bring it back as soon as feasible, once we've had time to review it, in case we need a couple extra weeks or something. You can.
Table it, but not date certain.
Yeah, right.
All right. Councilmember Novak.
Your honor, I would like to withdraw my motion and move to table this to bring it back date uncertain.
Was the table some to?
Date uncertain.
Date uncertain, thank you.
Yes.
All right, and did you beat the second that, Peter?
Yes, sorry. I was a little too excited.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're leaving this. You're not gonna talk about well rehabilitation? And I'm sorry, sir, you are here. You weren't gonna be painting right now, were you?
Possibly.
Really?
Yeah. Just, I just have one real quick.
Why don't you come up to the amble? It's, the item is tabled right now.
Yep.
State your name and address, just for the record.
Michael Lydig with Robert E. Lee and Associates, I'm representing Club Car Wash, 1250 Centennial Center Boulevard, Holbert, Wisconsin. Just a couple of quick questions on my end, just so we can try to provide something.
Well, these are probably questions for Mr. Patzner, but okay, go ahead.
Well, is the purpose of tabling to, for you guys to gather more information, or for us to come back with something that meets the 30% exposed brick?
Well, I would say it's because the council wasn't satisfied in painting all the brick. So it was, you know, it was try and maintain the standards of the.
Certainly.
Port River.
River Rapids Overlay.
Thank you, River Rapids Overlay District.
I do, I do just one thing, and Mr. Patzner, please correct me if I'm wrong or mistaken something. I don't believe the code section for the Coon Rapids Overlay District is to have red or exposed red brick. It's, there's sort of a listing of materials that are allowed there, and natural stone is one of them. I may be wrong on that, but I believe typically Club Car Wash uses, when they build these from scratch with, they're looking at like 20 or 30 of them kind of around this area in the next coming years. They would normally build these out of like a split-faced CMU that is more of a gray. I wish I had samples here, but airport security gave me some problems last time. From my understanding, that would be approvable by right if they tore the building down and rebuilt it in this CMU that would be normal. The goal of the painting step was to try to sort of find that middle ground of matching their branding, because they're a club car wash, it's a fee-based system, it's important to them, while also not, you know, demoing the building and essentially losing out on that. So just a little insight into that, but from my perspective, is that something that you guys, do you guys, and maybe this is not the time for it.
We're all done tonight. These are all questions from Mr. Patzner.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming in, though. All right, item six, consider Resolution Number 25-8/8, accepting plans and specifications for the 2025 well rehabilitation and authorizing solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is an annual event for us here when we look at the rotation on our 24 wells and eight booster pumps in our water treatment facilities. So this year, we're looking to review Wells 7 and 12 and East Booster Pump Number 1. This is where we assume the worst of the worst and everything goes wrong, and we see what the bids come back at, and we make that recommendation for you. So I'm seeking authorization to go out for those bids, and we would come back to provide you with information on the program when they're opened in, probably in March, early March.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Mr. Hammer, is it just two wells this year? Is that what we've been doing all along, or is it one less than normal?
Councilmember Griscoviac, it is one less than normal. We've kind of reached that point where we were transitioning in adding our boosters. If you recall, early on, it was all just wells, and we started to incorporate our boosters into that. So we're at a point where multiple wells are kind of on that seven to eight-year period, but we've identified some other needs, some pumping of our chemical feed lines. So we were trying to be flexible with the funds here to address other related issues without trying to overdo this one.
Yeah, I noticed that, and I appreciate that. I think that makes a lot of sense. Plus, again, we do this, and, you know, we plan for the worst, and a lot of times, they're not that bad, right? And we just get them rehabilitated, and they're back up in business, so approve this.
All right. So with that. Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Griscoviac.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-8/8, accepting plans and specifications for the 2025 well rehabilitation and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Griscoviac and a second by Geisler. Is there any further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Novak.
I just want to state for the record that I really wish Councilmember Griscoviac hadn't said, usually, there's no problems with this.
Can't miss it.
Yeah, it's in the budget if there are. All right, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're up to item seven, consider two joint powers agreements for signal reconstruction and ADA improvements at two locations on County State Aid Highway 12, Northdale Boulevard. I like, this is all because Mr. Armstrong wants that, Councilmember Armstrong wants that intersection safer at University and Northdale, isn't it? You just jumped right on that.
I was gonna say, we better do this one right.
Mr. Hammer.
Councilmember Armstrong, Mr. Mayor, rest of council. There are two here, and I guess we'll start with the first one that you had mentioned, that's Northdale and University. The way to make that the safest intersection would be, we would turn it into 90-degree angles, it's just a skewed intersection there. The only improvements proposed for that is just upgrading the signal system itself. There's really not much to be done as far as the configuration or turn lanes or those sort of things. It's ADA enhancements primarily and just replacement of the age signal system. Because it's county road to county road, it's 100% Anoka County's cost. However, EVP is always 100% city cost. So the strobes that are on there for emergency services are city costs. And since it's on a common border with Blaine, we take those costs and split them 50/50. So you'll probably notice on this one, it's a very small cost compared to the others. So that is the first one. The second is at the entrance to Armstrong Elementary. It's a private access into a school, however, it's considered a city street, it's a city leg. So our contribution on this one is 50% of the improvements, as well as the emergency vehicle preemption, so that's why that cost is a little bit higher. Again, ADA improvements solely, no changes to lanes or configurations, just upgrading the aging infrastructure. We talked about both of these in work session a couple of months ago. Nothing has really changed in any regard since that time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is that an official name change to Armstrong Elementary?
I'm sorry, I meant Eisenhower. It's just stuck in my head. My mistake.
Okay, just checking. Councilmember Geisler.
A question for Mr. Hammer, as far as, why is Blaine paying for it and we pay them versus the other way around? How do we end up in that situation?
Councilmember Geisler, that predates my time here, it's just a previous agreement that's in place. There are other locations where we pay and we charge them back. In some instances, they just charge each individually, as opposed to rewriting things and doing another JPA with Blaine, we just wrapped it all into one.
That's right, thank you.
All right, any other questions of Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
In conjunction with the development that we just approved for that turn lane, that 135-foot turn lane, will all this be built together? Does Anoka County have to build that turn lane, or is that the developer's?
Councilmember Griscoviac, that's typically the developer's responsibility, so it'll just depend on the timing of construction for that to occur.
Okay, just minimizing disruption and things, okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody want to move this one? Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to approve the two joint powers agreements with Anoka County for replacement of the traffic signal systems on County State Aid Highway 51, University Avenue, at County State Highway 12, Northdale Boulevard, and at County State Highway 12, Northdale Boulevard, at 111th Avenue.
Second. Motion by Carlson, a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item eight is to consider Resolution 24-22/8, accepting plans and specifications for the Foley Monopole and authorizing solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council, this is, we've got the new tower online, we're still functioning with the existing Foley, making sure things are okay, but we anticipate in the next couple of weeks that Foley, the existing Foley Tower will be taken offline, and we can start working to drain that. With that coming down, there are actually three contracts that are gonna be part of this project. This one, because of the cost, is gonna have to be publicly bid, it's just required of what's been done. A lot of this work is specialty of what people do, so we've grouped it into those specialties. So we'll be looking to demo the project, which we anticipate being less than statutory requirement, we're gonna get bids on that, and then we're gonna do some site prep where we remove the top four feet of the foundations, all the underground vaults and piping that lead into that, leaving some of that behind, and then this third contract would be to physically come in and construct the monopole. It's a sequence that will start as soon as the weather allows in the spring, should we move this forward, but we will be quoting those other two projects. This one will be publicly bid, we'll bring them all back at one time in early March or mid-March, and give you the entire budget and our recommendations on the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Your honor.
Councilmember Novak.
I move to adopt Resolution 24-22/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering an advertisement for bids for the Foley Monopole project.
Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Will we see what the plans or what we're specifying? I would imagine that our consultant, S.E.H., had an idea of the design of the monopole, but I've just started to notice that there's different designs for these things in some communities. Do we have a set design already that everyone's bidding on, or will we see some options?
Yeah, Councilmember Griscoviac, I can provide for you what is in the plans. There's no aesthetic treatments to what it is, it's gonna be a galvanized pole, 150 feet tall, we have some perimeter screening or fencing at the base. The requirement for the design of it is that if it falls, it has to fall upon itself and not, you know, tip over into the neighborhood. That's the only constraint as far as how it is designed, but there's been no conversation to date about how I wanted a certain color, or I wanted to look like a tree, or, I mean, there are plenty of options to be had. This is just a standard galvanized post. If you would like to see something different, we can certainly add that into the project, but as of right now, it's just a standard monopole.
No, I wasn't envisioning anything, you know, extravagant or anything like that, I just kind of was wondering what that design would be, because I've noticed there's different ones. There's monopoles, and there's ones that are just four that go up, and then the antennas are attached to it, so.
I'll send out a set of plans that'll be bid to the council.
We could probably get some pretty good private funding if we made it look like a golden arch. Councilmember Geisler.
Mr. Hammer, just to clarify, you mentioned, the reason why we're not bundling this is because each three of these phases are kind of unique contractors, and nobody would do all three parts, or it's best off in three individual bids or solicitations.
Councilmember Geisler, you may get someone who's going to bid on one or the other, but primarily, the demo contractor is not an erection contractor, they're not a utility contractor. Could we package it all together into one? We could do whatever we want, but then you're gonna end up with subs to subs, and you end up with some of the other projects where we're awarding multiple contracts, and you're relying on one to manage the other. We thought this would be best considering the easements and things we've already negotiated, and the timelines that we're on, and also as a cost savings potentially, and good for us, to really specify those specific items, so you're dealing with one contractor to get their work complete and not having to rely on a sub of a sub of a sub.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. And then I encourage you to check out YouTube for the water tower they took down in Independence, Missouri last month. We want it to go better than that. It wasn't good, it was like Uncle Bubba hooked onto it with his tractor or something, but. All right, item nine, consider Resolution 25-32, accepting the 2025 crisis response[1780.41] Item nine, consider Resolution 25-32, accepting the 2025 crisis response grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs. Chief Steiner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. In 2024, the police department applied for a crisis response grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs. And there were 27 agencies that applied with $1.9 million in funding available, and of those, 10 were selected. One we recently found out was us. The department intends to use the funding for an additional embedded social worker. In 2022, the police department hired our first embedded social worker, and since that time, we've come to realize the value of it. It's been a very successful program. In fact, in 2023, we don't have the 2024 stats available yet, but there were 2,192 different cases or calls, of which that resulted in 206 on-scene responses. One of the main stated goals in this grant is to increase the crisis response and follow-up contacts by 50%. The grant period runs from March 1st, 2025, to June 30th of 2026, and we were awarded The award would be used for salary and benefits for this position. As part of the grant, the police department has developed a work plan and budget approved by the Office of Justice Programs. The funding source was allocated by the state of Minnesota in 2023, and there are no federal funds involved in this, so we aren't affected by any type of federal activity right now. The grant agreement and Resolution 25-32, which would approve the agreement and acceptance of the funds, are attached to the city council's review. And in accepting the grant, it would require the addition of a temporary but full-time position within the police department in 2025. The associated budget amendment is before the council under 25-30. The amendment includes 10 months of the position to be expensed through the general fund, which is 100% funded through the grant. The remaining grant funding and position expenditures for 2026 would be incorporated during the 2026 budget process. And our recommendation would be that council approve Resolution 25-32, authorizing the agreement for the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs for the 2025 crisis response grant, and approval of Resolution 25-30, amending the 2025 general fund budget for the crisis response grant.
Councilmember Butler, I can tell you're chomping at the bit there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Steiner, I was just curious. So I know this is a state grant, and I know that it's temporary, and it says in this temporary hire. Would the goal be to come back through the 2026 budgetary process to try to make this a full-time position? I just know with some of the problems with the state, I would be worried that this grant might not be renewed, whether next year or perhaps in a future year?
Yeah, Councilmember Butler, we've had a pretty extensive conversation about how to extend this grant and for a couple of different reasons. One, we want to make it attractive for people to apply. So the discussion we've had centers around using opioid settlement funds to round out the 2026 year and then go even beyond a little ways into 2027. The hope is to have it be at least two years guaranteed to attract candidates. And yes, you know, our hope is to come back to council at some point in the future and demonstrate the continued success of this program and try to figure out a way, you know, to keep it going in perpetuity. And I don't, that's the cart before the horse a little bit, but we really were working hard to come up with a solution to at least make it an attractive two-year assignment for applicants.
Thank you, and congratulations on the award.
Oh, thank you.
Let me go ahead, Chris.
Mr. Mayor? Chief Steiner or Mr. Stemmle, just, and these, the source of these funds is from Minnesota. They're not federal, they're not passed through to the state. They are Minnesota funds is their origination. Is that correct?
Councilmember Geisler, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Carlson?
I'm glad, Chief Steiner, you mentioned the, using the opioid money to extend it out and make it a little bit more attractive for people. A year and a half might sound kind of, kind of short timing for somebody, but I appreciate you doing that. I was going to ask about the opioid, opioid money and how that could play into this. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
Just, just so, I know it got mentioned, but just so it doesn't get glossed over, 2023, they were looking at 2,192 different cases or calls for this, for this position. That's averaging six calls a day and to some people, that may not seem like a lot of work, but depending on the cases and the calls that you're dealing with, the extent of what they are, that can keep an individual very, very busy for a single shift. So kudos to, kudos to the department to have this and to, to be forward-thinking on this, because I think if we're honest with ourselves, we know that this is something that's probably going to increase versus, before it's going to decrease in the future.
Your Honor? Councilmember Novak? And then Carlson?
Yeah, again, I just wanted to congratulate you, Chief Steiner, in coming out and getting this. This is a city of 65,000 people, and I think the number of cases we've had in 2023 alone show how necessary this type of position is. So again, congratulations on that one. And so I'd like to move that we approve Resolution 25-32, authorizing the agreement with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Office of Justice Programs for the 2025 crisis response grant, and approve Resolution 25-30, amending the 2025 general fund budget for the crisis response grant.
We have a motion by Novak and a second by Carlson. Councilmember Carlson, did you have something over there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I also wanted to add on, I mean, these calls are, I know they're saving the repeated calls to the police, and it's also, look at the services, they're life-saving services. It could be averting tragedy in our city. There's so much benefit. And our current embedded social worker does such a fantastic job with other things too, other than working with some of the folks that we work with in the calls, and she has just a lot going on and doing such a great job that it just, it's, it's nice to, nice to have two embedded social workers.
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Geisler?
Just, just a point of clarification on, on member, or Councilmember Armstrong's math, that's per calendar day, not workday. Calendar day. It's eight and a half per workday, and it's almost one a day for on-scene, so, for workdays. So this is, this is very much needed. I very much applaud staff for approaching and pursuing this, and this is, I, I think we'll see this in the budget long-term, and I hope we do, because I think it does, as my fellow members have pointed out, provide a valuable benefit to the city and its citizens.
Mr. Brody, I think this is a terrific use for opioid funds. What, remind, how much do we have for that?
I'm going to defer maybe to Mr. Stemmle, although I think there is somewhere in the $600,000 range right now is what we have in our balance, and that's getting added on every year as we get additional funds from the various sources. We also are using, I believe, half of, of our current social worker's salary is being paid out of that opioid and fund money too. And then I believe, and Mr. Stemmle can add on, we are spending that money in a few other minor spots as well.
Yeah, Mayor, council, primarily right now, it's the 50% of the current mental health professional that is housed in the police department. It'll be a good opportunity for council this year to talk about the potential future uses of those dollars. We have been accumulating them for the last couple of years. We do have a balance of around $600,000 now and expect that to grow, obviously, as additional deposits are made as a part of that settlement. We have been waiting a little bit for the county to sort of formulate their plan around how they're going to use their $18 million that they're getting from these proceeds, and they are starting to roll those things out. And I think some of the council members heard some of that last week at the local government officials meeting. So I've got it on my radar to kind of talk about that in conjunction with some other budgeting things as we get in a little further into the year, and it's really a good opportunity for us to, to do that now as we have those funds sitting there. We want to put them into play.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Butler, did you have something?
I was just going to say what City Manager Stemmle said. There was a great meeting last week with the local government officials where a lot of us were there, where the county really did walk through like the history of these settlements, what the plans are. This year, we really have a county plan, and I'm just really excited to see how we can work together with both the city and county resources on that.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 10 is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending city code section 13-1300, stormwater drainage utility. Item 10. Mr. Hammer, did you want to hit that or do you want me to read your details?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, briefly. This is an update to the recent update from back in December. As we were here, we amended chapter 13, 1300, related to stormwater utility, based upon the feedback in work session as well as that council. We've done some calculations and looked at a new land use category designated as sod farms with an RAF of .07. This is the introduction. If there are any questions or substantial issues that you may see with this now, would probably be a good time to make the, the changes before we come back in two weeks and start looking at introductions.
Passing it, yeah. Any questions of Mr. Hammer on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I actually don't have any questions on this. I just wanted to say I appreciate staff and council bringing this forward. I think it's a fair thing to do and it makes sense, so I'm glad this is moving forward.
All right. Councilmember Geisler?
I, I actually want to thank my fellow council members for having a good discussion about this, to fit, to come to a place where we can all agree to it. So I appreciate that we had that. We had a lot of robust discussion to land at the math and to work with staff to find the numbers. So I appreciate, I appreciate that we were able to do that in a productive manner.
All right. If there's no further questions, we will consider an ordinance amending chapter 13-1300, stormwater drainage utility introduced. And item 11 is to consider Resolution 25-31, amending the 2025 golf fund budget for additional expenses related to well rehabilitation. And we have our Director of Golf, Tim Anderson, here this evening with us. We're always happy when you're here, Mr. Anderson. Anything you want to talk about?
Mayor, council, it's always great to be here. This isn't, in my opinion, this isn't the most exciting golf course topic I would bring to city council, but it's one of the most important. As you know, the irrigation system at a golf course is the lifeblood of the, of the facility when needed, when Mother Nature isn't helping us out with, with the natural rain. This pump is 100 horse, this well is 100 horse, the pump in this well is 100 horses, moves approximately 1,000 gallons per minute when in full use. We had in the budget $25,000, discovered some pitting and a need for a bowl replacement, hence the additional request for funds this evening. Yeah.
1,000 gallons a minute?
Yeah, the other, yes, the other pump, the other pump is 150 horses, and that one is more like a 1,500 per minute.
Wow.
Approximately, approximately, those two wells irrigate approximately 270 acres of the 350 acres that the golf course sits on.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
Is this well, number three, is this one just dedicated for golf course irrigation?
Mayor, council, yes, it is. This is, to give you a perspective of where it sits, this is the well that is on the opposite side of the road from the county's wave pool. But it, this just irrigates the golf course, yes.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I'll make a motion.
There you go.
To authorize Resolution 25-31, amending the golf capital outlay budget by adding $8,000 for the golf fund balance for completion of the well rehabilitation project, pump number three.
Second.
We have a motion by Grischoviac and a second by Novak. I wasn't sure how far we were going to drag you into the weeds to talk about well pump rehabilitation before we had to bring in Mr. Hammer, you know?
I was, Mayor, council, I was nearing that point. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We're up to the open mic public comment. Is there, and there's nobody here. All right. And I don't have any reports on previous open mics, and we are up to other business. So, Mr. Anderson, while you're here, hey, what's going on up there? Did we have the driving range open for a little while or?
Well, Mayor, council, you know, we did have some warm days. They didn't quite line up with our ability to open up the driving range. If we get three or four days in a row, the public can certainly trust that we will do that. There is a significant snowfall potential for Saturday, so we might have something that we haven't had for a while on the golf course, and that's cross-country, cross-country skiing and snowshoeing, which folks can get more information from Anoka County, who operates that within the park.
All right. And then they can stop into Kendall's afterwards and, okay.
That would be appreciated.
Yeah. Since that's part of your budget. All right. Other business to come before council this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Hey, how about a snowflake days update?
How about a snowflake days update? Oh, so, we're going to call on Marquee, Councilmember Carlson, your lordship.
I don't want to have the hat.
Where's the hat?
I didn't want to, it takes up too much room. First of all, congratulations to the fire department for winning the guns and hoses, police versus fire hockey game. The police department won the guns and hoses game last year. Fire department won guns and hoses this year.
Convincingly.
I am, yeah, it was, it was a hard day at the office, Chief Steiner, for the, for the folks in the fire department.
They were about to invoke the mercy rule.
Yeah, I didn't know if they had like a, like a five-goal rule, kind of like the five-run rule or something like that, but that would have been good. Looking forward to next year's guns and hoses days, games, so they can kind of, you know, see where that one goes. Congratulations to the Rotary for winning the chili challenge last night. Boy, that was some fine chili. It was a great night last night. All, all the, all the folks that were in it were, you know, really good, but, but Rotary pulled it off. Coming up, coming up, Senior Snowflake Party is coming up on Friday, February 7th, from 11:00 a.m. till 12:00. They're already booked, but for those folks who are, already made your reservations, be a great time. It's always a great time. Winner fun at Sand Creek Park on Saturday, February 8th, from 11:00 till 2:00. Boy, bring the kids, bring the grandkids, bring anybody's kids. It's a, it's a great deal.
With permission.
Well, okay, make sure that you're related to them.
Chief Steiner's going, what the?
You've got to make sure you know the kid or somebody. They got a medallion hunt, kids' medallion hunt from 11:15 until 12:00. Grand prize is a $200 gift card.
Wow.
From Jerry Shwin. Big prize there. And then Cookies and Canvas from 12:00 until 2:00. This is at the Sand Creek Park in the Warming House. Cookies and Canvas, getting cookies and free painting activities for the kids. And also from 11:00 to 2:00 at Sand Creek Park, there'll be skating and outdoor games for the kids. It'll be a great morning. For Sunday morning, February 9th, the waffle breakfast at the Coon Rapids Civic Center, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. No charge for that. It's a free will donation, and boy, that's just a great event. And then the day ends on Sunday afternoon with the Family Day at the Coon Rapids Ice Arena, Coon Rapids Ice Center, February 9th, 4:30 to 7:30. Yeah, it's right in there, right? Right in that Super Bowl time, but you know, if you got there like at 4:30, you know, and left, you know, you, really, you can miss the first three quarters, I think, and just watch the fourth quarter. That's when it all, that's what it all comes down to.
Who has any interest in that Super Bowl anyway?
You miss a few commercials, you know, but it, just, there's still a lot of great